I think it was like a year or two when I got it, so it's gotta be close to the six.
Meeting called order. Today is Tuesday, February four. Town Council meeting, town council chambers, eleven seventy eighth street, West Warwick Island. James, we did some prayer.
Dear Lord, let us pray, let us pray for those all over the country who have just suffered losses in recent tragedies that happened over the last few weeks. And please give us the guidance tonight, the wisdom and the courage to make the right decisions on behalf of the taxpayers of the town of West Warwick. And not let us forget that we are their voices and they depend on us to support them. Amen.
Mark Lewis, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Dennisson?
Here.
Councilwoman Chardy?
Here.
Councilman Methier is absent. Councilor President Williamson?
Here.
Council President Baslin?
Here.
Form is declared. Consent agenda, approval for minutes from the January twenty first, twenty twenty five, regular town council meeting.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ahs, ahs.
Business licenses, request from Friendly Sons of St. Patrick for a parade license.
Move the license request.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion on this license? Just can't believe it's that time of year.
No kidding.
Yeah.
So that is Sunday the sixteenth. At one o'clock. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ahs, ahs.
Appointments and resignations, request from Nathan Shapiro for reappointment to the library board of trustees, return ending February twenty twenty eight.
Move the reappointment.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ahs, ahs. Jake's not here, but he's been on this board for many years and it's a good job. My colleague, Colton T. represents.
Request from Lee Bryce for reappointment to the library board of trustees for term ending February twenty twenty eight.
Move the reappointment.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ahs, ahs. Colin and Gordon both know they've been reappointed. Thank you.
Resignation of Vincent Marzullo from the recreation.
I may have to accept the resignation with regret.
Second.
Moving second?
Vincent wrote a letter and I'd like to read the letter because I had questions. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you, it was addressed to Paula Iannatale. Paula, thank you for our recent, for your recent letter regarding my status on the West Warwick Recreation Committee. When my appointment expires on two one twenty five, I do not wish to be reappointed. The committee has not met in a few years. I don't see any formal interest or will on the town's part to meaningfully engage town residents on the status, condition, and planning for our recreation assets, facilities, events. It seems to be completely in-house or a closed club. I would respectfully recommend that the appropriate officials consider upgrades the native park or Crossland Road. The neighborhood families would certainly be supportive and appreciative. Perhaps either CDVG or unexpended ARPA, unexpended ARPA funds could be used. Thanks again for your assistance, for your assistance with this matter. Best wishes in the new year, Vincent Marzullo. I mean, I'm going to regretfully accept the resignation as well, but it brings another question. How many people are on this board? And is there a board at this board?
If I may, it's not properly before you tonight. So if you want to have a question and answer about the recreation board, I would suggest that you put it on the agenda. This is only dealing with Mr. Marzullo's resignation. It doesn't open the door to discuss it.
Alright. So I will accept the resignation and here's how many people, just how many people that's going to be then? That's another, that's another time.
Yeah.
One.
Can you find that?
One. And now you're the one. And that he was the one.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ahs, ahs. You just make sure we send a thank you to the one.
Yes. Yeah.
New business, request from Shoreline Properties for bond reduction for cars, the car subdivision at one forty six, that have anyone present.
Move the request resolution, I think, then. Yes.
Will I have a second? No discussion? I can second. No discussions? I'll second. Any discussion on this matter?
I have discussion. It's coming to us tonight before a vote. So I've taken some notes. I'd like to read them. This will explain the reason behind my vote. In this situation, first of all, I, this isn't what for, I live in what for. It's, it's no secret that I live close to the project. So let's get that out of there. In this situation, everyone has a role to play. Department heads the planning board and town council. I understand the numbers that have been given to us. But my belief is that a council person has a much bigger role than this. The five of us answer to the taxpayers that elect us. Many taxpayers living in this area in a neighborhood have complained, asked questions, and are curious regarding this particular property and project. I'm going to give you a list of things that, list of issues that taxpayers has, have presented to me over the last couple of years as their councilmen in the area. Springtime, at least three years, grass has not been, been cut until the end of May, beginning of June. Grass was mowed, was measured approximately three foot high in certain areas by me. Don't believe me? Confer with minimum housing. It's a public safety issue. July of twenty twenty-three, the West Warwick Fire Department, State Fire Marshal, West Warwick Police Department, and the Bomb Squad were brought in because someone on the property, residing on the property, was going to light a firework display. It was brought to my attention, a stage was set up. I thought it was for music. I was sent texts, I was sent messages. I, I didn't believe it. I called Chief Barone, asking him if they approved anything. He said he did not. I sent him pictures. He, at that point, he handled it from there. Don't believe me? Confer with Chief Barone. On working every day in this area, there has been constant dust and dirt coming from the area. Picture the desert and the wind going across the desert. That's what it's looked like. And I understand because it's dirt. The people understand because it's dirt. Oh, that was supposed to be contained and controlled. That was actually told to me in a planning board meeting by planning board member Josh Barron. I left it alone figuring that this was, this would be under control and it wasn't. For the first few weeks in the spring, I let it go. Nothing was done to control the dust. I did report it to the building official. Again, don't believe me? Verify it. One week later, a water buffalo was dropped off, which is a big water tank. It was used sparingly and mostly at the end of the day. So basically nothing. And it's not acceptable. This event occurred in the spring, followed through the summer. We all know what kind of summer we had. It was dry as a bone. And then went into the fall. One of the main issues, and this actually began in the summer into the fall, was the debris that was left on the road. The road coming from Coes, if you want to start on Coeset Avenue, take a right or left onto Denetto Street, right by the gas station. You, you had chunks of dirt coming off, that came off the tires. Some of them were the size of softballs. I can send you pictures if you'd like. Pictures that have been sent to me by the taxpayers in the neighborhood. There was dirt everywhere. At times, chunks of dirt, lot of sand. It made it dangerous for those walking, those walking near dogs, which the circle gets a lot of, a lot of people in the neighborhood from down the street. It's a very nice place to walk. It's a quiet place. It made it dangerous for kids to ride their bikes. I wouldn't, I wouldn't ride a motorcycle. This was addressed to me several times by several people in the area. I can't quote some of it. It wouldn't be appropriate for a council meeting. Was addressed once with backpack blowers, blowing off a small area just outside of the entrance to the plaza. Again, if you don't, don't listen to me, I can verify this with the planner, the manager, and the building official. The plow driver, it snowed around Christmas time, so the plow driver took care of most of that with the plow. Snow had melted, it began working, same thing. We just had snow, so it's taken care of right now, thank God. I ran into someone just the other day. I self, and I'm not walking in the circle anymore. He referred to it as the sandbox. So and the work will continue over there as it should. I'm not looking to stop the project. The people in the area are not looking to stop the project. We're looking for them to contain their problems. They shouldn't be made out for the public to deal with. And these are all West Warwick taxpayers. Some of who, who paid their taxes to West Warwick for over sixty years. It's a long time. And they're going to deal with this bullshit. Not cool. Their concerns are valid and they should be addressed. I'm okay with releasing the bond in its entirety when the project is complete. But this is a performance bond and I believe this is a part of the performance that they need to make better. So my vote is no to me. And this is the reason why.
Thank you. You have a comment?
I am here.
Hi Al.
Hi. Unfortunately, the issues that Councilman Luchardi raises are not before you tonight. The state statute and our subdivision regulations are the law that we must follow, or you must follow. And it's pretty clear, to give you a little background, the law states that when eight development is going to be submitted, the developer has, there's three, a choice of three things. Either the developer can agree with the town that they're going to do the entire project. And when they're done, the various professionals, the town engineer, the director of public works, or anybody that's involved, Kent County Water Authority, go in and look at it. And unless the job is complete, they cannot go to, they cannot get final plans. The second method is the method that is now in place where the develop, when the, when the developer goes to the planning board for a development, the planning board goes to the experts. It says the town engineer, but in this case, it's the town engineer, the director of public works and Kent County Water Authority, and says, how much is it going to take to complete this job? And in this particular case, the number for that was one million thirty thousand one hundred dollars. The law then says that when that, when that matter is chosen, there's a way to get it released. And I will tell the council, up until a few, or there can be a combination of the two, two, two methods. I will tell the council that up until a few years ago, our regulations provided that the developer would have his choice of which method to use. Well, needless to say, they were all choosing the method of we won't post anything. And when it's all done, well, then we'll get it released. Few years ago, the planning board said, this isn't any good. Because in that situation, if the developer goes belly up or something happens, the town is then left with this half-finished project. So instead of giving, as our regulations originally provided, the developer the right to choose which type he wanted, we moved it over and now the planning board says which type they want. Well, needless to say, the planning board is concerned and the language of the the regulations and the state is that to guarantee that the project will be completed. So that's where we are tonight. The, when this, when this project began, the town engineer, the director of public works, Kent County Water Authority said, it's going to take one million thirty thousand, one million thirty thousand one hundred dollars to complete it. The law then goes on to say that either developer can complete the whole project and come in and ask that everything be released, or the developer, as he's going through and completes part of the work, can come to the planning, planning director and say, we'd like a partial release. The planning director then goes back to the experts and says, in this case, the town engineer, the director of public works, Kent County Water Authority, how much is it going to take to, for shoreline properties to complete their job? That's the amount that has been submitted to you, that the town engineer says the sewer system needs two hundred and eighty-four thousand. The director of public works says the matters he's involved in, and I think I submitted a breakdown of that to you earlier. He needs a hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and Kent County Water Authority needs eight thousand for total, a four hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars to complete this project. So by the law, if that's all that is needed to make the town whole, and if tomorrow the builder went out of business, the town has that amount of money to do the work and complete the project. The town, at that point in time, does not have the authority to continue more than is held than is necessary to complete the work. So in this particular instance, from the one million thirty thousand, to get to the four hundred thirty-eight thousand, he's entitled to a reduction of five hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred dollars. And that's, you know, that's what the law says. Our regulations are based on the law. And that's what's before the council. That, yes, if somebody has complaints with the job, that's, that's not what's before you tonight. What's before you tonight is that according to the experts, it's going to take four hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars to complete this project. In my opinion, that's all this council has, the authority to keep by way of a bond. And the council, it's, it's, it's a matter of I personally think the council does not have a choice but to reduce the bond according to statute and the regulations. I don't see any, anything in this statute or the regulations that makes it discretionary.
So Al, if I may, if the council doesn't have a choice, then why is it in front of us?
Because the, the, the law, you have to, it's up to the council to reduce the bond. But the law says that the planning board sets the bond and then in order for it to be reduced, the planning board has to get the professionals to say, what is the amount to be reduced? The planning board then makes a recommendation to the council that that's the amount that should be reduced. That the, the planning board and in, in the recommendation that was submitted to you, the planning board spelled out the basis for its recommendation. It's not that the planning board just said, oh, we think this will do it. This is based on the, the, the statements of the experts, just like the original bond, which was the one million thirty thousand dollars. That was not something that was just drawn, well, let's, let's ask for a million dollars. That was based on the numbers as submitted to the planning board by the experts as to, this is what's going to, what it's going to be needed. And the, the language, the language of the ordinance, it says, language, I'm trying to find it, to guarantee, to guarantee to the town that the required improvements will be constructed. So that's the purpose of the bond. As I said, fortunately, the, the planning board a couple of years ago had the foresight to say, okay, we're going to make the decision of what's, what's going to be posted, not the developer. Because in those days, the developer was just saying, I'll finish the project. And they didn't post anything. Now the town is protected. And the, all the town needs for its protection is four hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. And so I don't see that the town has the right to say to somebody, well, that's, if you go out of business tomorrow, we want to have more than that. Because our experts have said, that's what we need to complete this job.
Al, you sent us the actual ordinance, if I remember correctly, via email earlier this weekend.
Yes.
The words, the council shall, may reduce the bond. Can you iterate on that? You're saying that should or must, but the words may. If I'm, I'm just trying to open it up now, but. So shall versus may. You got shall versus may. Can you explain that in lawyer's terms? Lawyer's terms. I want to get a lawyer's turn.
I'm pulling out the prisoner's stage. That the amount of the guarantee being held by the town be reduced to cover the it says that if they're choosing the method that they did choose, the planning board makes the recommendation to the town council, shall be recommended to the town council. One, to authorize the finance director to return the improvement bond completely. That's if they completed the job. Or two, that the amount of the guarantee being held by the town be reduced to cover the estimated cost of the remaining improvements.
What does C say? You said one and two, but there's a number three there.
That number three is that no reductions or releases be, be made. That's the case he was coming in for, with the work having not been completed.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is something, this is new to me. It's the first time I've seen this, something like this come before the council.
I think this is the first time this has come before the council, basically, because I don't think.
But that was the maintenance part of it. And, and is there, correct? I, I think, is there a maintenance part? I remember that from Eva Court, which is now countryside way, I believe, up off Burlingame. So will a piece of this be held for another year after, afterwards?
That's a separate, that's a separate.
No, I know that, but it's just, so when we sign off and, and the development's done, don't we still hold a piece of it? That's what I remember. And that's the only other one I remember ever coming before the council.
After, after the project is complete, the town has the right to require a maintenance bond, for I, I think for a period of one year. I'm not positive on that.
And Al, just, just for the record, this is a single family development area. Why is a bond required for that? Like, how about for condos and everything else? Can you just wreck the football, just explain why we don't collect bonds for condos? All these condos developments and the first single property?
It's, now, I, I would, I, my personal opinion is that they, they could go and if they, if they're looking for full planning board, if, if it's a, go on a regular planning board session, master plan, preliminary, final, they have the right to, the planning board has the right to demand the bond, no matter what type of project that is.
Yeah, I think, I just don't think we, we have necessarily implemented. I don't think it's a bad idea. It protects the, the town for sure. So that, that maybe is something we want to talk about because there are, there are other developments that are not single family homes that have taken place that we have had issues after the fact, after the developer moves out, so.
There's something else you might want to consider. The bonding aspect of it is to guarantee the improvement, not really to punish. But there are ways and other avenues to take to get compliance regarding some of the issues that you were talking about. So violations could be set forth by the building inspector or any other department head that's got authority to do so. So you might want to address it that way. But normally, the bond is to make sure whatever work is going, is supposed to be done and it has been done. Usually they get to check that off because what they're paying is a premium originally on the one million and they're trying to lower that premium. Mary Beth, you're right, there is a maintenance. When they did Eva Court, that's now
countryside way.
It was an issue about design and planning that was, took years to resolve.
You couldn't get the turnaround for that pile of truck, if I remember.
The two pieces of property.
I remember that from Jim, not from being on the council.
The two, the two properties where the road was supposed to be thirty feet wide and you put too much to the left versus too much to the right. So, but in this instance, Al's correct. You do have some, but I mean, you, you really have to look at the numbers and say, if you're going to say one, you give zero, you're going to get yourself in trouble because they have the right to appeal your decision. But if the planner is saying that these are the numbers and you're looking to do something else regarding the issues you brought up, there's another way to handle that versus going as a demand. Because the bond isn't there to punish.
I agree.
And I absolutely think the, the issues that you bring up should be addressed, but I'm not so sure. And quite honestly, I hope it's not the case, but perhaps, you know, the reduction in premium is something that they need to help finish the project and I don't, I'm sure you're looking to have it done as soon as you can have it done.
Of course, I mean, people, people question me on a regular basis.
Right.
One, 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 one comment on why it hasn't happened in others. I think a couple of the ones you've mentioned occurred prior to the change in our regulations, when it was up to the developer to decide which one of these methods he wanted to use. Naturally, they're going to say, we'll do the project completely and then get it released instead of, we'll put our money upfront. That was, I think, and David, you're, you probably will remember where in the past, Elaine would come before the council and with a request for a reduction or a request for a release. And that was prior to the, the formality that the zoning, that the planning board put into regulations a couple of years ago. I think it was done a lot more informally prior to that.
Alright, any other comments?
Yeah, if, if I may, Jeff, you're the only one of the three that's here. We don't have Mr. Jeremiah or anybody from Kent County Water. Could you just speak a little bit about your methodology for arriving at your numbers? Were these measurements and, and formulas given to you by the builder or did you take a look at it and say, I need so much concrete for the sidewalk, I need so much seed for whatever it might be? How did you arrive at your number?
Yeah, you take, you take the price of what asphalt is, price of what concrete's going for, and you do the math and you figure out the square footage. And that's how you come up with the numbers. So.
So did you get the square footage yourself or was that given to you by the builder?
They gave me the numbers. I, I tracked the numbers and that's what we came up with. But I also been out there.
Right.
I inspected all the drainage and everything. I have all the pictures. Everything was done exactly the way it should have been done. The sidewalks and the top part of asphalt is not done yet because the plant's closed and the weather, we do concrete now, it's just, what's going to be done is training block. To this point, everything has been okay on my end, but yes, that's how we come up with the numbers. They give us the, the square footage and we track the numbers and find out what asphalt's going for at that particular point in time. And, you know, it's, it's not to say that, you know, they might be getting a little bigger price, but that's supposed.
Right, right. I just, I just didn't know how everybody, because, you know, looking at the numbers, and I understand it, it's not an exact.
No.
But all the numbers are there. It's not an exact, but all the numbers are pretty round. So I just wanted to know how we got to the nice round numbers and they weren't just throwing out their estimates, you know?
No, 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 because, you know, they put out an estimate, I'm obviously, you know, and I actually be correct, everybody else, I'm sure they're doing the same thing. They're going to double check all the numbers and make sure they're where they're supposed to be.
So, so Jeff, with Kent County Water, I know you don't represent them, but you represent the road. So if, I know, like pipes and lateral have been installed.
Mm-hmm.
Weren't pressure tested. It really doesn't mean anything to pass the pressure test.
Yeah.
So what happens if that pressure test doesn't pass and there are leaks?
Then they have to address them. They would have to get them, Kent County Water would be out there and get them. I can't speak why there wouldn't have been a pressure test on. I can't speak on that yet.
Yeah, are we really, why are we releasing any money for the water? I mean, if, if it doesn't pass any pressure test, that could affect the road. Because you don't know what's going to happen down the road.
No, no, you don't. And you can't, you know, you can't say that a pressure test, it's kind of back and forth. You can't say that if they get a pressure test and it passes down the road, there's not going to be a leak either. I don't know why, maybe they're waiting to do the pressure test. I can't.
And I'm sorry, you're on the hot seat here. So, I mean, this is a little, we're giving back a little more than half. How close is the project to completion?
They have, they have to do, like I said, the top coat of asphalt on the, on the road going in.
Yep.
They have to do the sidewalks and they have to do the landscape. I think a lot more would have got done. They just ran out of time as far as
So are all the, forgive me that I don't know this, are all the structures up or all the houses up?
No, no.
Okay.
All, all the
So the connections wouldn't be
Drainage and everything like that, all that's, that's done.
Okay.
They'll have to connect, obviously, however they're, you know, and I'll, I'll look at that once they, once they get that done. But they still have more buildings to put up and finish the asphalt, the sidewalks and the landscape.
And the sewer.
How many
Sewer, yeah, the sewers. I know that, yes. Jim said there was a problem, I don't know what the problem was.
How many are up?
Houses.
Jason, you're there.
One, two. One, two, three, I want to say three aside, I could be wrong, three aside. And then one, two, three are being framed.
And there's six
And is seven, what's the total number?
Seven.
Yeah, it's one foundation in the right hand corner that's just a foundation and nothing.
Actually, I saw
It's a process, obviously.
There's no doubt. I saw online that
There's no argument there, there's no argument about the color, the size or anything like that. I could care less.
And I, you know, you talked about the, the dust. Obviously, you know, I went up there and talked about the water overflow and it had to be used and so on and so forth. It's hard for me to be up there every day all the time. But I know I've talked with the contractor doing work on shoreline. And as soon as the weather breaks, they'll be back at putting the top coat on, making sure that, and I'll be up there once the top coat put on to make sure they're putting the proper depth, so on and so forth. And the sidewalks, same, I'll be measuring the curb reveal, measuring, making sure they're using the right concrete.
And that's why the, the two eighty-fourth for the sewer is the total amount. Because they weren't going to give a, give on a
I told the Jim Jeremy.
Yeah, yep. I mean, I did see online where one of the houses is listed at five ninety-nine nine, which shocked me, quite honestly. And I think when we started this a long time ago, six years ago, maybe, they were three fifty or three, something like that. Yeah, I don't remember, but yeah.
Not sure.
Welcome to the new market.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, but that's not
No, it's not
Nothing to do with us, those aren't any of our concerns.
No, they're not.
The quality of the work isn't any, I mean, I'm getting, I'm speaking on behalf of the neighborhood residents, taxpayers.
And, and those are concerns.
They're, they're very
But I'm not sure it's tied to this. And so I don't know
Why, I do, I think it's, the whole thing's tied together.
Well, Tim, you talk about other avenues and maybe those all need to be reviewed and implemented if necessary.
Well, I think the councilman I know has talked to me numerous times about this project. I think he's been trying to stay out of it as being, but as a neighbor, he's, as a councilman, he gets the calls. So he rectifies it with the department heads or whatever. I don't think he's getting the results that he's asking or getting. You know, I, I did witness the mud, you know, and I, and I had a meeting, you know, because Councilman wanted to bring it up a few weeks ago. We had a meeting up in Mark's office with the building official in Maryland. And we were supposed to get an update back. Maryland did send me an update, let me know the bond and all that was coming. That's the only update we received back. You know, not, and I don't even know if the building official had met with the builders or what. But we never got a response back from the building official. So he has been trying to go the right avenue and have the issues rectified. Jason has, and I've asked Jay if he's ever talked to the builder. They've actually stopped talking after situations happened between them.
He probably shouldn't anyway.
He wanted to stay
No, it's not your role, no.
So, you know, because I, I know I have reached, I know my board, I've had issues with builders. And I've reached out to those individual builders just to get an update on where they stand. So, and I know that relationship's not there and it's unfortunate. But with that being said, I, I mean, it, it's, it's hard because we have numerous developments in this town. And I think the only way to hold them accountable, you know, you're talking about other avenues, those are legal avenues, I already know that. But that's not what we want to get into. I think the bond avenue, and I think this is something we can talk about later on with all developers, that, you know, this, this puts, this bond puts the, the feet to the fire per se. Because it's important to them to get their bond money back. Where we've had developments right now that are over ten years old, the foundations in with no framing going on yet. Those foundations are probably no good for crying out loud, who knows? But it's
And I assume there were no bonds for those.
And, and
I assume, I don't
I don't know either, but it's just, to me, if there was a bond, it would get I, I have said to Jay, you know, on a personal level, this is a development that's actually moving along, which is good. You know, it's not sitting there, I know it took years to get started, but now that it's started, it looks like, you know, the last time I was there, there was three houses, now there's six, and there's the number seven foundations in the corner. So I, I give them that, at least they're moving along and, and these houses will be on the tax bill soon as they're sold and whatever else, so.
And I'm sure it's going to be a great neighborhood with hopefully many families that are there and and kids, for my kids to play with. But again, it's a vote before the council. So are we, are we voting?
And all comments, all done?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I have a question. Two twos and no and three ones and no, right?
Two twos and tie, it does not pass. And you need a majority vote to pass. So if it's two to two, you tie, it does not pass.
So it does not pass.
So if I may, you, you had a vote, you've got two ayes.
I didn't pass, I
I'm just, to make sure, everybody said, everybody said aye, that's what I was getting at, so if it was against them, make sure the record's clear. And if you're, if you're opposed to it, it's going to be a nay vote.
Oh, okay.
Well, the way the question was asked
Right.
I wanted to be clear.
All right, next question, does not pass.
Excuse me. May I be heard?
You can bring up a public comment.
I'd just like to know, what is the reason that it did not pass? Just so I'm clear.
You, so you can't
You want to bring it up at public comment, we can, I can address it then. Public comment at the end.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were a developer.
I didn't know you were a developer.
Oh, neither.
Okay, we're bonding.
Yep.
Discussion action on resolution for temporarily transferring funds to the senior center to address cash flow shortage in fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Who's backing him up?
Good evening, just so you're aware, I, I know I messaged it, but Manny Murray was excused, although he really wanted to be here to talk about this. But he had some personal matters to attend to. Kristen can share more in depth. However, the, the crux of the matter is Manny came to us in mid-January to discuss the fiscal status of the senior center. He informed us that due to decreasing availability of grants and higher than anticipated costs, the senior center was running a deficit and anticipated running out of money in mid-March. So we, we talked a little bit about the, the issues that he's had. He had instituted a, a corrective action plan and slashed some things and cut some services. But essentially, he anticipates needing approximately eighty-nine thousand dollars to get through the rest of this fiscal year. They have a, I'll call it pending, but an employee retention credit that was submitted through the IRS and for all intensive purposes, we've been informed that it's been approved. But we're not sure when the funds are coming. So the ultimate request of this is to, for us to provide that, those funds for him in anticipation of us getting or him getting the eighty-nine thousand four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars back from the IRS. I'll defer to Kristen. You want more specific information?
How certain are we that that actually is coming from the IRS? Do we have paperwork that says that? Do we have, do we have?
He didn't show us paperwork, but he is certain that it, that it's coming.
Kristen, I just want to get
Yeah, he, he is certain that it's coming.
But he didn't show us paperwork. He was also trying to go through someplace called the Foundation that would have advanced it to him, but the Red Eye Foundation? Yeah, I think that was it, yeah. But the, the, he tried to go through Reed's office to get a letter from the IRS saying it was absolutely definitely coming, but they said the IRS was too busy.
Even if it doesn't come in, he's never asked for any, I mean, I don't remember as long as I've been here, he's asked.
Little, little
Right.
And the amount of programs and services that comes out of that is unbelievable. I mean, we'll make it happen.
I mean, like I said, he, he needs this to get through fiscal twenty-five. He'll be before us in a month or two to talk about his proposed needs for fiscal twenty-six. But
And I do think that maybe he, we can help him. And you make some, you made some recommendations in your memo. And if we can take some of that burden off, we probably should do that. Yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, that just makes common sense. So no need to duplicate efforts at, at two different places as far as payroll and things like that. Right. Yes. Yep.
Any questions for Kristen or Ma? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Resolution awarding the town for air conditioning replacement project and approving the funding sources.
Move the resolution.
Second. And you recall, last year, we were awarded a grant from the state's Office of Energy Resources, slightly more than a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, based on an application that I put in shortly after our air conditioning system failed here, specifically in the basement. So we were awarded a hundred and, a little more than a hundred and forty-three thousand. And the building official and I have been kind of working diligently on trying to get this, an RFP out. We put it out twice, we did not get any bidders. We sought out some vendors on the master price agreement and eventually obtained two quotes. And then we were further delayed by one of the requirements initially is something called the Build America, Buy America. Things that are paid for by federal funds, funds needed to fulfill that requirement. However, it had since changed that it's the aggregate federal funds needed to be two hun, in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand. And in this case, the federal funding is only that hundred and forty-three thousand. So we're below that limit. I believe the majority of items that are proposed by this vendor are built in America anyway. However, it was just something that delayed the, this coming of the forty. So I'm respectfully requesting that we award the project to Prime Heating and Cooling LLC of Smithfield in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand. And also, I'm requesting that we encumber up to twenty-five thousand dollars for additional electrical services for the installation of new electrical disconnects for anticipated total project cost of two hundred and sixty-five thousand. The funding sources are again, that a hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents from the OER grant and up to a hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents from unallocated capital funds.
Any questions for Ma? Hearing none?
So we'll get this going real quick. So when the, we're not worrying about air conditioning right now, but we will be, yes, yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Discussion action on the town's planned use of the former Compton Mill site on Polasty Street.
Question, Ma?
So I'm not looking for a binding vote. However, I think you're all aware that the DE, we submitted a request with DEM to do a stage one, a stage two, I believe they call it, study of what that condition of that property is with contaminated contaminants and brownfields. So stage one was done or phase one, phase two is just about complete. And what they're looking for is what the town really thinks they're going to do with these two lots. Because it'll, they'll base their recommendations on, on recommendations for remediation based on what the plan is. Obviously, if your plan on asphalt, putting asphalt on the place, it would be different than if you were going to stop it. So they're just looking for a little bit of guidance. I mean, my gut is, is that we leave it as open or recreational space and maybe seek some funding to
It's just a lot when the chimney was on.
Yes.
So if I
We knocked down, right?
Yeah, we knocked down. So if I remember correctly, the town was looking at a neighbor who was looking to purchase.
So there is one neighbor that is, was looking to purchase one of the lots. Or at least, in our last discussion, at least lease part of it. So he could have better access to drive around his building, the former, I think it was American Ag or down at the base. So he could have access and a couple of extra parking spots there. He's been working on the property. So he has an interest in buying, which is one of the reasons I said this is a non-binding vote. I mean, obviously, if we want to sell it, it has to go on a referendum anyway. However, in the meantime, I'd like to get that study finished so we have some ideas on and they're going to, they're going to do it both ways as far as if it was industrial or we sold it to some type of commercial thing, or we wanted to do some, some type of recreation fields, park, picnic area or something like that.
I, I know what you award, but I know we just put a beautiful playground down in Crump. And I, I mean, I don't know how much more space we want. I think it's an opportunity for us to sell it. If somebody's going to build on it or whatever, it's revenue by tongue. I think just keeping it open space right now would be kind of just like us maintaining it, us costing us money. It's already costing us enough money. Because I know I was one of the ones that was against knocking down the chimney and saying, sell it to the person who wants it, let them because it costs us a lot of money. It costs us sixty, seventy thousand dollars if I'm correctly knocking down that chimney. I'm like, why don't we just give the land to the neighbor and let him knock it down? But that didn't happen, so now here we are, what are we going to do with the land? So, I don't know.
I, I'm not looking at creating another playground. I think Crump is the focal playground we put in, it's beautiful, it's going to be the focal point in the area. How much is this, with the study now? So we're going to do this study. And then we're going to decide at that point, so we're going to put, we're going to put the money up for the study.
It's already done, I think, isn't it?
It's essentially done and it's part of a grant.
So now we're left with, we have an answer.
They want to finalize it and provide us some potential remedial actions. And then we can decide if we want to engage in any of those based on what our intent is. Or do we just sell it as is and the next person has a clue on what they might need to do?
Mark, how big is the lot? Do we know?
Yeah.
Was it two acres?
I can't really tell.
Yeah.
You can't really tell.
It's a weird lot.
It is.
It's too young.
So who's the neighbor that is interested in that picture?
Sarah, can I? But it's off, it's off the main, it's off the main drive. It's the egg company, because the old egg company's built, but it's off, it's off the main drive.
Right, right.
The question would be, once they're done, you have the property appraised and then you have a dollar. And then we have to go to the financial town meeting. So this guy would have the opportunity to bid on it, you just can't give it to him. So there's, there's a bunch of things that need to happen once this is done.
So there's, there's a bunch of uh things that need to happen once this is done. But I think what they're looking for is that if it's gonna be paved, it's gonna be a parking lot versus something else that's gonna be more natural.
Right.
But since that part of town is really more.
Little more than four acres.
Commercial business, you know, I, I think what he's looking for is just more parking.
Okay, so.
But it's, right now, it would be vacant land, and you'd have to put a dollar amount on it. You, you can't, I mean.
So we, so how can?
You could try, I mean, you could try to recoup your cost, I don't know if an appraisal would come in and say, yeah, properties worth X, and you recoup your, your loss, but, I mean, if you think about it, if you really wanna develop that part of property off Pulaski Street, even though it is off the road a little bit, I mean, what better way to do it than make it a little more, you know, appealing for businesses and industry? I, I don't think we should maintain, keep it.
No, I, I mean, you're looking at what's, I'm trying to think, like, what's there right now, you know, for something to have a, um. I don't think it makes sense for us to keep it.
Yeah, you're gonna have DEM issues, 'cause some of that lot's right near the river.
Right, yeah. And that's why, you know, when I first got on, got, uh, went into the council, that came up, it's just such a weird one. You know, between the river and, and the businesses on either side, and, and the surgeon wasn't there yet. So it's a vacant building, and I just don't think it fits the area. I, I like the woods, personally. But if that's something, if something that could benefit the town by going up to bid and getting something, and giving it up, I don't know what would go in.
Me neither, but I'm just, there, there's like, I know even Rose has brought up to us, there's, there's a ton of properties out there that we own that above other people's properties and stuff like that. I think it's time we get those on the tax rolls and get some, a little more revenue coming in, it might not be much, but it's something. And, you know, if, if an individual, like the business owner on the side, you know, we put it up for sale, we get an appraisal and it's able, you know, a developer wants to come in and put something up, I don't know, but it's, I think it's to be developed in, you know, out in town, it's in some areas. Four acres is a lot of them, and I don't understand some of it's near the water, but.
Plus, if you, you know what you're doing.
I believe it's all some commercial, industrial business, not residential, so you'd be trying to approve that piece of property, like you said, make it more appealing. So, is there all familiar with the cemented coastline over there on the river?
Well, and, and I, and I will say, like, I know the, the lot down in Phoenix that had the mill on it that burnt down. You know, ten years ago, it was up for sale for seventy-five thousand, and then when it went through phase one and phase two, ended up getting closer to six, four to, four to six hundred thousand. Because they had all the phase one and phase two done, so they knew what they're doing, and they're putting pots down, milk lake units, so it might be something that, you know, depending on what comes before the plan, or it's a plan that, you know, it could be used. Another storage unit, but who knows, I, I don't know what's.
So it's safe to say the preference is to.
Yeah, so I don't know how that's gonna change that.
For a commercial resale.
It seems that way, but you're right.
They say it's unusable.
Don't worry about it.
Heard it.
Discussion action on adding head and roll charter amendments to potential school bond referendum.
I have this one, obviously, we know, we'll update the school building committee momentarily. Uh but anticipation of having a referendum for bond approval, we have an opportunity, uh since we have to hold that style of an election, to address charter amendments if they're desired. So I, I think we're just, Sarah and I talked about it, we wanna kind of get ahead of that uh because we obviously will need to resurrect those notes and have everything out and discussed and vetted um in a timely manner to have it prepped and ready for submission for a referendum.
What do you think a referendum would be? Would it be in May?
No.
A referendum, no?
I mean, I, it's premature now, I would suspect, shortly after summer.
Oh, okay.
As well.
Probably well, like, primary.
Right after school comes back.
Okay.
People aren't on as many vacations, and we have a captive school audience since the.
September and fall.
The biggest thing is the bond, but I just wanted to kind of get ahead of that, if, if there's an interest in putting some charter amendments or recommendations on there, we'll, we'll get those.
We should.
Resurrected and then look, get fresh eyes on.
Yeah, I think, I think we should use that opportunity.
Because the charter, there are things that just are, are antiquated and, and doesn't make, they don't make sense anymore, yes. And, so I think that, that's wise.
Good idea.
Any other discussion? Thank you.
School building committee update.
And, again, on February fifth, we have our school building committee at four o'clock in the high school media center. We'll be finalizing and refining these, uh proposed stage two submission to RIDE. And then the following Wednesday on two twelve, we anticipate having a joint school committee town council meeting where the school committee is expected to recommend the stage two proposed application to the council for its approval and eventual submission that Friday the fifteenth.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you for the update, Mark.
I just want to put out this caveat that per RIDE regulations, you have six months from RIDE approval. Fall sounds like it would work, but I just wanna read it, six months to have a bond referendum from RIDE.
From RIDE approval or secondary?
Uh, from sec- council on elementary and secondary education.
Which I think is, wouldn't, the May would be the earliest it would be.
So the earliest it would be, would be in May.
Yes.
Usually around May fifteenth is when the council on elementary and secondary education make that call. Um, but I just want to.
Yep, thank you.
They do that so that you can't wait too long.
Upcoming appointments, Suerus Board to review appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Suerus Board to review appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Tax assessment Board to review appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School building committee, tree warden, recreation committee, Westmore Two Hundred and Fiftyth Commission, Tuxit River Authority, like, fill a vacancy for an unexpired term beginning June twenty twenty-six. And uh the Westmore Public Library Board of Trustees was filled this evening.
Public comment, I'll let you go first. Well, I just want to, if you can state your name and address for the market.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is John Malzern. Uh Joe Cattelli and I are the principals at June Carport. Um, is, is this being filmed?
Is this public record?
Yep.
How do we access, how would we get a copy of?
It'll be on the Westmore website, and it'll be on, it should be within twenty-four hours YouTube.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah.
It'll be on YouTube.
So, um, this has been a long process for us. I've met with Mr. Knott, Mr. Williamson, Mark Corullo, Merrill and Sheldon. Four years it took us to get a project approved that completely conformed with both your zoning ordinance and your planning strategy, right? Councilman Luchardi appealed the decisions of the planning board a few times at least. They also went before the zoning board twice. It's been just a long, drawn-out process to where we are this evening, which is you have before you, or you had before you, the recommendation from your town engineer, Ken County Water, and your director of public works. I'd like a reason why you ignored their recommendation, number one, and number two, I'd like to know why Councilman Luchardi was allowed to vote on the matter.
If I may, um, he has the absolute right to make statements before you, like public comment. You also have the right to respond to his questions, you choose, you have no legal right to, or you don't have any responsibility to him or any obligation. But if you wanna answer his questions, you can.
Well, given the, the vote aspect of it, even if it was two to two or three to one, it was a dead vote because you need majority of the council.
Are there not five council members?
He's not here to vote, so it doesn't matter.
But three would have been a majority, correct? Okay. But, the point remains, I don't, I don't understand why Councilman Luchardi didn't have to recuse himself, but we can discuss that later. I just want.
I'm not, I'm just, I said.
I don't.
If, if there was an issue, you feel it's an ethical violation, then go to the ethics.
Uh, like I said, you.
But for the record, I've never been before zoned. You just say.
Again, he has the right to his opinion as to what he heard and what he saw, if you want to respond, you can, but, um, just be.
I would just like, I, I didn't hear a reason, I, I, I heard your, the complaining word solicitor.
So I think you walked in as councilman was reading a checklist of items.
Yes.
So you can actually go back online and watch the checklist of items tomorrow.
Okay, but I didn't hear a reason why the bond was ignored, you're saying it's because of that checklist of items?
I, I don't know why they voted the way they voted.
President, I'm just telling you that the vote. There was a discussion, and then there was a vote. And the vote was.
And you didn't get majority of the vote.
I understand that.
So that's, that's where I have to end. So when you review the video and the audio, you can see what was discussed prior to the vote.
So, the answer to my question of why you uh denied the bond request, even though that work has been done, is that comments were made before I walked in, and I'll have to rely on those comments, that's why the.
I'm not, I'm not stating, I'm not stating that as a response to your question, I'm stating the fact that there was a discussion held by this town council, and then there was a vote. It was a two to two tie.
And it was simple, when Councilman Luchardi read his checklist, at the end of his checklist, he said he will be voting no. That's on record.
Yeah, and, and I just, once again, no one, no one's told me why he didn't have to recuse himself.
I can't answer if he has to recuse himself, because I don't really know if he has to.
Okay.
Unless, as Councilman Luchardi said, if you feel that there's some sort of violation, you can file an ethics violation. They can determine whether or not he violated.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Just, whoever's next. You come on up if you're gonna speak, there's no, there's no order.
Yeah, my name is, uh, oh, good evening, my name is Guillermo Lugo. Uh, and Shalina Smith.
Yeah.
We both reside at twenty-four Mellow Street, West Warwick. And, uh, I've been listening to the process, how this council works. And we learn about how the town of West Warwick works. And, uh, I would like to bring up an issue that we've been dealing with for almost a year and a half. Uh, Councilman, uh, Dave Goslin, the president, and Mary Beth have both been at twenty-four Mellow Street, which we reside. And we've also have Charles Davy. Charles Davy, did I say that correct?
Yeah, Charles Davy.
Yeah, Minimal House Inspector? And it seems that, uh, we haven't gotten any resolutions up till lately, and it's still affecting our well-being. Um, I have written, or Shalina and I have written several emails, which I learned how to do. A little help by the grandchildren. And I would like to read the latest email we wrote. And just bear in mind, this has been a difficult situation for both of us. As far as violation, five point eight six. Five point eight point six, heating and glare. I know my behavior has been out of line sometimes. And it's very difficult to live in the town of West Warwick. Shalina and I have made a decision. We no longer wanna live in West Warwick. I have been more than friendly to our neighbors. I clean town property, I cut the grass, I try to maintain the area as good as I can. And for some reason, Shalina and I feel that we deserve more respect than what we've gotten from the Brian and Susan source. They're not here right now, but this has been an issue that's been affecting us for the longest time. Anyway, I am going to respond to the letter that, uh, I believe that Charles Davy wrote to us. And I'll read it, I'll read out, I'll read ours first. In response to the glare, glare is glare. And the five point eight six, five point eight point six, glare and heat states, I don't have it with me right now, but that no glare should be a direct lit on adjacent properties. Again, I don't have it with me right now. But anyway, glare is glare, glare from a spotlight or glare from a commercial luminate, high-luminate landscaping lights, it's the same. Glare on our windows, glare on our yard, glare on their yard, glare on their windows. It has the same effect. Harassment from their lights, harassment from our lights, it's all the same. What is it that you don't understand? And this is directed to Charles Davy, his letter. Nothing has changed in our eyes. We feel you didn't take our complaint seriously. We were the ones being affected by the lights reflecting through our windows. We are elderly West Warwick taxpayers who deserve respect from the source and from the town of West Warwick. We were misguided from day one, from the beginning by Charles Davy. We don't know what picture Charles Davy showed Judge Assalone on our first violation, meaning the first violation that, for the source. The judge made a decision on those pictures, she dismissed the case without hearing our defense. We were told that we would be able to save. We have been misled from day one. Somehow town officials have to understand and see what we're contending with and how serious the situation is to us and our help. If the past protocols for this violations. If the past protocols for this violations apply according to Charles Davy, this is, this situation to us, oh my God, I lost. If this past protocol for the violation applied to this situation and had been handled informally as previous cases, which he states, as you have stated, does that mean that Judge Assalon handled this case unfairly? Because of the pictures you presented before her? Didn't subs- didn't substantiate our case at municipal court? And yet we were told that we were able to defend ourselves on the first violation? And again, like I said, that, and again, we were told we would be able to defend ourselves in the first violation against the source. On the second violation, we were misled by Charles Davy, who informed us we could request a trial. Again. I am not a lawyer. I don't understand the law. All we are is West Warwick residents. Who inform us we could request a trial, which time we could explain both violations. When it came to the trial, our hands were tied unknowingly to us that we could only speak of our violations. And you know what our violations are? The second violation.
Just a little, you said I know which violation. Are you talking about your violation or the source's violation?
The second violation.
Whose second violation? The source or your, you're the, you're the second?
The second, they're the first. Uh, I didn't bring him with me. I should have. When it came to the trial, we wanted to resolve this somehow. If it meant for us glare is glare, reflection is reflection, lights on our windows, lights on it, it's all the same. All we were expecting is to stop. I took action in response to her dignity, for her respect, for mine, pride, for my dignity. We felt that the town of West Warwick let us down. Again, when it came to the trial, our hands were tied. Unknowingly, we could not, we could only speak of our violations. We thought we would be able to speak of both violation. And again, this is like tic for tic. We came to Charles Davy for help. It just made things worse in our house. And I'm sure Mr. Assalon will probably respond to it. We could only speak of the violation, not the source. Your explanation and role of how this process, of the process, how it has, uh, how it works has been misleading from day one. Somehow town officials have to have to see and understand how serious this situation is. It's a serious matter. I know Shalina doesn't like to bring up her age and I, I don't mind. We all have health issues, all of us. If you state town officials have to see and understand how serious this violation, uh, how serious this situation is. If you state that you have no emotional involvement, why the state? Why state you don't care of the outcome? That's exactly what Brian has stated from the beginning. Put the shades down. I don't care. We have been neighbors for twenty-five years. We've never complained of Brian and Susan source, never, ever leave me there. People at this town might think they know them. You don't know somebody until you live with them, and we've lived with them. We feel that we were fined five hundred dollars and, and a cost, and seventy-eight dollars against us in favor of the plaintiffs. When from day one, we have been the victims. We have been more than respectable to, to, to the source than they have been to us and good residents to the town of West Warwick. It's a serious situation. I hope the town of West Warwick takes it seriously. If Shalina would like to comment, please allow her to say something.
I, I know I'm not going to be as thorough as him, but it's, it's gone on for so long. And it seems like such a simple request that we can't seem to resolve between two parties. And as you can see, what, how distressed he is from everything, I feel the same. And I, I, I just, we've tried everything and I, I know like even right in the beginning when I've spoken to Mary Beth and, and I've asked, you know, she had mentioned maybe to put shades on the lights. That would be a possibility. She, you know, all just possibilities and work together to, you know, find a peaceful solution. And in the winter, okay, you can say, fine, you put the shades down, you don't see it. Glare is glare and they do come in in the summer. You have, you know, if you want to take a nap, if you want to just be in there to relax. This, it seems like there's no need to have, um, lights on, you know, blaring at you, you know, and, and it, it just, it, it, it just, we didn't get a resolution and we've tried so hard to follow the rules to get a resolution. And no one, you know, we've never dealt with any kind of town. I don't think I've ever had a ticket, you know, so you, you, you don't know and you ask and you follow and you think it's going to be this and then it's not that. And then you, you know, you, you're dumbfounded and then you become angry and, and then you, you know, you react and then you try to find, you know, you just don't, you just don't know what to do. And it's very easy to say, well, get a lawyer. You know, you don't want to continue a fight. You want to, you want to solve it. You don't want to. I don't know. You just want to solve it. There's, it's town of West Warwick and I love the town and, you know, it's, it's brought us to where we want to sell. We don't want to live here anymore. And that's, that's not what you work hard your whole life. I worked fifty years for Dr. Arkin in West Warwick and gave to a lot of people in West Warwick my, my skills, my this, and I feel I, if I like the town, why can't I have it my home? Or why can't we find a peaceful solution? And you know, and I think really even Brian was blindsided at first. I don't think he knew the first time he came up to the, you know, when we had the, I don't know, trial, not trial, but the first meeting. I think we thought we could both speak. I don't, I, it was just so not explained. Well, not to us anyway. I don't really even think to him, you know? So I don't know. Is there, I don't know how you do things, if you think of things or try to solve.
Well, the thing is, I know you, we both were at your house last, sorry, almost a year ago.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I find it a shame that two residents side by side for twenty-plus years cannot resolve an issue. Unfortunately, both parties had their day in court. Based upon what I've heard and seen, I, I get it. I, you didn't like the resolution from the first time in court. And then I think anger set in and I, and unfortunately it did. And I think spotlights were installed on your roof.
Yeah.
Aimed right into their house.
Yeah.
So they filed the same complaint on glare as you did. Now, and again, it went before the judge. We don't have any say in what goes on in the courtroom.
But that's right. That is where our biggest beef came in. Nobody, we were, we were so told or led to believe we could speak and never spoke. Even at the trial, we, exactly what some Charles Davy was, you will have a chance to represent yourself at that time. Now, to me, that's we didn't, had, said nothing. We said nothing. It was, it, it, well, I shouldn't say he would, Guillermo spoke, okay? But we were told we could speak about the whole thing and it was chalked off, you know, right at the beginning, so.
No, again, I, I understand your frustration. I, I get it. It's, it's two neighbors who aren't getting along and have, you know, and, and if, just so, I know Mary Beth and I are, are privy to some of the information, but one neighbor has a decorative lights in the backyard, come to deck somewhere on the fence. I don't know if he removed them from the fence or whatever, but he went to court. And whatever happened, I guess it got dismissed because I don't know if he satisfied Charles Davy or the the building, the building officials office. I don't know if he put special bulbs. I don't know any of that. But at that point, I know after it was dismissed, Mr. Lugo zip tied some spotlights onto his stink pipe of his house and aimed it right into their house. And then other lighting.
Can I approach?
Sure. So spotlight was aiming through, through the other neighbor's house. Charles Davy had sent an MO, noticed a violation, and they had their day in court. And I guess you were fined. I'm not sure. I wasn't there, so I don't know exactly the result. So that's, that's the long and short of it. I, I don't know. This is a situation between two neighbors with lighting and I don't know how to solve this.
So were you fined because you put the light?
Yes.
It going, going to somebody else?
Yes. And he did that, not that it, what?
If I may, I understand what their situation is, but
It is a shame.
This council appoints a judge and this council enacts ordinances, which the minimum housing director has to follow along with state statute. Uh, you can't overrule or even rehear the arguments made for or against the uh, violations brought by the town against the Lugos or the source. You don't have any, it's basically a separation of powers issue. All you have the duty is, and authority is to appoint and you guys enact the ordinances that everybody has to follow. So I can understand that they want to bring this, um, argument as to how they were treated by the municipal court to your attention, but there's really nothing this town council can do. And I, I.
Not sure if it's municipal court or Charles Davy are trying to.
We can't, we can't, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. You went before Judge Assalon in the municipal court, correct?
I, I can't hear you.
Yes.
You went before Judge Assalon.
Yes.
In, in the municipal court.
Yes, yes.
Because a violation was brought against you by the town of West Warwick through the, through the minimum housing.
Right. We, what, we brought one up against them.
Originally.
Originally. When he came before uh, Judge Assalon, he lied about the lights. He lied about the fence, about the lights on the fence. He had, again, when I stage, we've been more than neighborly, he had lights wrapped around my fence for years. For years. Now these were low. You can barely, they, they're low. These, these lights that are up now are commercial commercial lights. There are different luminants, different levels of, of wattage in these lights. I never said, we never said a word. Shalina and I never said anything.
Sir, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
But this is not the appropriate form to bring your complaints to the front.
So, so what, what do you do next?
Man, I can't advise you as to what to do. My suggestion would be is you speak to an attorney and perhaps they can let you know what your options are. But the council, again, again, the council can only do two things in assistance. One is they appoint the judge for the municipal court and they enact ordinances that their department has to follow, what's the statute say, has to follow. Once you're in municipal court, there's a separation of powers. This is a legislative body. It's not a judicial body.
And again, we wish you could have resolved this with your neighbors from day one.
Well, I, I, I tried even today. I, I, you know, went over neighborly and, you know, Susan and I have a good relationship. And I said, if you. Had a good relationship.
If you could please, you know, ask Brian if he could shut them off at night. You know, I mean, sometimes they're on at three, sometimes four till about, well, till ten, that's when they're.
Anyway, if I may, you can have these.
Yeah, you can have it, definitely. You can have your.
No, I don't want it.
What's that for?
It's for you.
What is?
You know what it is for.
No, I don't.
You know what it is. Who works at Cox?
Oh my God, this is property of Cox?
Uh-oh.
You just put that on record, you know? You just incriminated your son.
There you go. But anyway, he knows, he can tell obvious. So anyway, we have tried. It's not easy. If I may, it, it's, 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 it's a serious situation, uh. Dave Goslin. It is a situation. We've asked, I get, we, this is a town issue. I get, I guess you, I, if I understand Timothy, Timothy? We've asked the town for information of how to appeal the first, the first, uh, violation, the second violation. It seems like even, I have tried on the website. I couldn't find any we, uh, uh, form. I went to the West Warwick library to try to find a form. Shalina has come down. I didn't want to come down anymore because I'm trying to keep my cool. There is no I don't, we don't understand how, as taxpayers, we cannot even get a form to appeal a violation.
Sarah, you had to explain that, right? Could you explain?
Oh, we cannot even get a form.
She's going to explain it.
Unfortunately, because the judge or the municipal court has already ruled. Because the judge has already ruled on it here, you would have to appeal to, I believe, the Superior Court and you would have to get the form to them.
I, I have to be very adamant about the fact that the town cannot give you legal advice.
No, no.
No, again, the town.
Okay, I understand.
When you ask for a form
Yeah.
that does not exist here, there's nothing they can give you because you can't appeal the municipal court to the town council, to anyone, the town manager or the town solicitor. You have to go with a different avenue. That's why my suggestion would be is to contact an attorney.
If I may, if I may, we have tried to contact an attorney. It doesn't work that easy. We have fourteen days according to
For the appeal.
For the appeal. The, the time is running out. So that means that we, as victims from day one, we have to pay five hundred fine and seventy-eight dollars in court costs or whatever it is. Well, we didn't start this. We didn't start it. We were the, they were the ones that started the harassment. I very ver- if I may, she brought it to my attention when I get home from work and I said, you know what, Shalina? Yes, you're right. They are kind of bright. And I said, give me time to speak to Brian. Cause I know Brian. I know what time he gets home. I know where he goes. I know what he does. I know, I, a lot of people know him that know me and so anyway. just finish. I know she gets on my, uh, she gets on my, she wants me to, but.
Usually I go rolling up.
Yeah, it's, it's the point, but I'm trying to keep my nerves in order. It, it's, it's, it hasn't been a situation. I've been more than nice. I've been more than fair. I asked him very clearly. After 25 years of respecting him, respecting his noise, respecting his smoke coming into our window, Shalina said, Shalina, put the windows down. I'm the one that said, put the windows down, put the shades down, turn on the air conditioner again. I try to keep the peace. I go up to him very clearly, very respectfully. Brian, how are you doing? Oh, I'm just going, how's Susan doing? I know she has her health issues. I have, I have prostate cancer. She has her, her issues. We all have issues. How's everything doing? Brian, just to let you know, Shalina, I think those brights that you put up are a little too bright. They're reflecting right up against the window. The response that I get, put the shades down. They're not coming down. I don't care. I raised my hand. I said, say no more. Say no more. We are human beings. We're residents of the town of West Warwick. Say no more. Oh, Bill, whatever. I said, say no more, Brian. You're telling me, you just said you don't care. You don't care about me? You don't care about Shalina? You don't care? So that's, those to me, that to me was, those are strong words. When I care for you and I respect you, we, we expect the same respect back. That's all we're asking. Respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I don't hear any. See, finger pointing, but.
I have one problem that, um, I heard today.
Just take your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gail LaVivier. My God, 300 Broadway, the Tuckett. I have a problem with, um, today. I saw food to the homeless, and I overheard you say that, uh, two people died from being frozen outside. One is, um, Rico and RJ. I just couldn't believe it because in Providence they had, and well, my first issue was because I was looking up in different states and, and Tennessee, Texas helps their people, and they had, um, it was like 170,000 homeless, and it went down to like 42. I'm like, oh my God. If they can help their people, and that's what I was saying to you, you asked me a question, how can we stop the homeless? And I said, well, if everyone took a homeless and brought them up, got their shoes what they need, and put them into some kind of school where they get a job, they could support themselves. But then again, you can't control the rent. If the rent would go down, which you can't tell the people what to do with their homes to put rent down, we could afford, they could afford to get out of being homeless and be, be, um, respecting West Warwick and respecting Warwick and County wherever they're coming from being homeless. But we're not going to fix the problem with all these rent being so high. But, um, I was looking at, um, TV channel, and I seen where it said, go local Providence, and about these little things that they made there, like little, um, I, I say, I, I look on Lake Rogers, there we was, there's two men that, who, two men that are doing it for the homeless. And they're talking about, they didn't have any money, but yet they're saying that they should have been ready for winter. I don't understand where all this money can be going all over the place. And then when it comes to this, I know you're getting aggravated, but when it comes to the.
I don't, I don't understand where you're going.
I'm trying to say, why is this other states that, that can work with their homeless and be so low on the amounts of homeless people? But why can't we do the same? Like in West Warwick, it's just a small little place. Why can't like the citizen, citizen people help the homeless, take one, one, one on one like that and get them out of being homeless? Get them into schools and being, getting into a job, like I said the last time I was here. I mean, isn't there some kind of program we can do that? It's some, some new program to work with the homeless?
I don't know. You're asking, I, I ignore it.
I mean, you guys are on board. You would know more than I would. That's all I'm asking. I mean, is it, yeah, somewhere some extra money somewhere that we can make?
Not in the town coffers.
No, no.
No.
No. Because I am trying to look.
State, I mean, I know you hear quite a bit. I'm not getting aggravated at all.
Well, I would be. I'm getting aggravated. I was homeless. I'm not homeless anymore. Thank you, Lord.
I'm not understanding where you're going with it.
Well, I'm just trying to see if there's some kind of.
Texas and the state and everything and.
We're, oh, now I'm not homeless anymore, but I worked hard not to be homeless. And if there was some other way, there, a citizen, say I had a job, and I took on one homeless. I got him into school. I got him into some kind of job he wants to do. That's it. He's, he can afford boots now and go to work. This is what I'm trying to say. Is there any other kind of extra money that we could try to bring, to, bring up that we could help these people get jobs and, I don't know, some kind of something?
Do you have any, any in the state?
No, we're, we're always looking for opportunity to have money, but it's not there. We've actually talked to the state, and I see Chief Verone coming up, so he's going to say.
Good, because I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking everywhere. Because Texas has it.
Yeah, so we are, we are working with our community partners.
Oh, good.
Wendy in the back, right, from the HAZ, and we work with Pride Behavioral Health, uh, helping homeless, and, um, we've been doing the winter warming and, uh, that outreach from Pride and, and the HAZ do have, um, components that will try to, uh, resources to try and get people into housing and.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
Why is it so cold tonight? And then beds ain't open for them tonight?
Yeah, so.
When there's been two people that already dying from the cold.
I haven't confirmed that, so, um, but I did.
Because tonight is cold.
So, um, yeah, so the criteria to open up, um, wasn't meant tonight.
Exactly. It's freezing out there. The winds are 40 miles an hour.
Yeah, they're six mile an hour.
Well, they were 40.
Overnight, it's only six mile an hour.
And tomorrow's going to be 19 in the morning, and tonight's going to be nine. See, I, I hope.
It's in the long run, it was very, it was very, very close to opening tonight.
Oh, but, but we,
Very close.
We are always working, Chief Verone is always making sure that we have, and I see Wendy in the back, uh, she's.
Well, I seen these homes that were open. I was really shocked.
Well, again, that's not, that's not West Warwick, yep.
Oh, no, that's here.
Old Palace.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're always looking. The governor has come. We've talked to him. Um, so it's just, it, there's not a lot of money to go around.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I wish if the community could help. I know they're upset with the homeless, and I understand why. But if the, um, um, community could help, you know what I mean? Because I do the, I do the food thing. I do the closet. I do the church and field. Matter of fact, I, I did my own meal with them tonight. It was a home cooked meal, not just macaroni. It was a meal.
I'm sure they were very thankful for that.
No, but I'm not trying to get any burning points. I'm just saying that as a citizen in myself that was homeless, I'm trying to get them into, um, have an idea as to the help themselves.
And, and Gail.
But the community, I mean, I know the community helps a lot.
So we're, it's a work in progress. We will continue to work on it, and thank you for all you do for it as well.
I was just hoping that there's that's our extra funds that we can.
I can guarantee you, there's no extra funds. Yeah. Yes, but we apply for whatever we can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gail. Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
No.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I have it.